Great, can you read the statement or certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to some sign law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Nero.
Here.
Mr. Malham. Mr. Van Harry.
Here.
Mr. Homthy.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bow.
Here.
Mr. Corvo.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Rico. Ms. Enorado. Mr. Valiants. Mr. Doolanville.
Here.
Mr. Harris. And Mr. Tenhold.
Here.
Chairman, comments. Just like to thank our members for making time for a special meeting. And application before the board. We have PB 2915, 548-568 Franklin Avenue, 41 Hilton Street and 21-41 Hilton Street. Block 3805, blocks 1 through 5 and 9.01. Sound Development LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I please the board. Counsel's name is Thomas Di Biase, representing Sound Development. And I also would like to thank you for coming out for a special meeting. We certainly appreciate it. I do have a list of experts that I would like to present this evening. We have an architectural expert, planning expert, an engineering expert, a traffic expert. But I would like to first introduce the developer, the actual person who made a decision to come to Belleville. And I think the way I got to know him, it would be helpful if the board got to know him. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, may I call my first witness?
Please do.
Michael Pacillo.
Sir, would you please raise your right hand? You should tell the truth, the whole truth, and identify the truth to help you out.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Michael Pacillo, P-A-C-I-L-L-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Pacillo, please stand here. And you and I are going to have to project because there aren't any microphones. Fair enough, sir?
Fair enough.
Okay. So what is your occupation?
I'm a contractor, developer, businessman, building New York City primarily.
And how long have you been developing in New York City?
Uh, 12 years.
What made you turn your focus from New York City to Belleville, New Jersey?
So, you know, New York is a continent within itself and it's an interesting market. But I was introduced to the Belleville market by my realtor, Donna Kena. Donna Kena said to me, "There's some interesting stuff happening in Belleville and I think you should take a look at it." I said, "Listen, I was born in Belleville. I know Belleville. I was raised here. I lived on Columbus Avenue. I lived on Woodward Avenue. My kids were, you know, born in Clara Massey." My mom says, "I said, 'Belleville's Belleville.'" She said, "No, Belleville's a new Belleville. You've got to take a look at this town. It's the greatest thing that's happened." "Sure, sure, I'll come out. Why not?" She invites me to the State of the Town speech. I come there, I'm blown away. I'm like, "This is a new Belleville."
Who were you there with, sir?
I was there with you, Tom Di Biase, Donna, uh, I think Donna was there, right?
And two bankers from Chase Bank.
Two bankers from Chase Bank and, uh, I said, "Wow, what an amazing development for the town. What a great vision for the town." This is what Belleville, this is what we always thought Belleville could be, right? So I was like really excited. At the end of the speech, I was blown away. I said, "I'm willing and I'm ready to invest in Belleville." So I started looking for property and there you have it. We bought Franklin Avenue project and we developed it and I'm happy to say that, uh, we think it's a great project.
I actually remember looking to my right where you were standing with Donna and I saw you giving, you were off your seat, on your feet cheering.
I thought the mayor's view of the vision for the town was spot on. I thought that what he believed in is really what I thought the town needed. You know, it's only my opinion, but I thought it was a great presentation. I believed in it and that's why I'm here. You know, pro-development. Development brings people. People bring business. Business brings new business. So I'm a supply satirist. I believe in, if you bring new business to town, you bring new people to town, you bring coffee shops to town, you bring new residents to town. So I believe in that model. So when I heard what the mayor had to say, I was very excited.
And you also believe in designing projects so that they will not negatively impact on the community?
Absolutely. I think that's the biggest misconception between towns, boards and developers. Developers want to, a good developer wants to enhance the town. I want to be part of the progression of whatever town I'm in. So if it's Belleville or if it's someplace else, we're here to make the town better. We're not here to negative impact the town. We're investing millions of dollars. Why? So the town is not better? No, we want it better. So, um, yeah, we believe in building a great product, top-of-the-line product and, uh, you know, impacting the town in a positive way, positive economics.
Now, one of the ways that you told me that you want to make sure you will not negatively impact on the community is to make sure that you only do studios and one bedrooms. Discuss that issue.
So coming from New York and from that market, you know, as developers, it used to be bigger, bigger, builder, bigger. Now it's smaller, smaller, smaller. Professionals, millennials, um, you know, the retirees, everybody's looking for smaller. The smaller apartments, we believe, have absolutely no negative impact on the town. They don't bring kids. They don't bring excessive cars. They don't bring... What they bring is young professionals or people who can afford that lifestyle. And, you know, they kind of change the dynamics of the town. I don't think there's any negative impact at all on the town.
What kind of materials are you planning on using?
Our buildings are all first-class. Our buildings are high-security, all brick, no cheap windows. There's no cheap anything in this building. This will be a state-of-the-art building. This will be a landmark building in the town. There'll be nothing like it in any of the towns. There's nothing in Carney or Harrison or Newark or Bayonne or Jersey City that will compare to this building. This will be the top-of-the-line building among the best built.
And you're actually pointing to a rendering to your right. And that rendering, which is blown up, is the same that each member has in his or her package. Is that correct, sir?
It is.
Is this correct, right?
Yes.
Now, what about parking? What is your theory on parking?
So my theory is on parking that, um, I think we comply, actually. I know we comply with parking, but most... Our market does not generate a lot of cars because they're Ubers, they're commuters, they're Zipcar, they're Zipcar. The New York market, the market, it's the same market in New York and Hoboken as here. That's our target market. Most of them don't have cars. I think there's going to be a lot of empty spaces in this parking lot, even though we appropriate the space. My daughter works in Prudential in Newark. She would love to live here. She's living in Jersey City. She doesn't have a car and she commutes to Newark every day. So my daughter, at 26-years-old, who's a professional, who has a nice entry-level job, can't move to Belleville because there's no place for her. But she can move to Jersey City and spend $3,000 a month. So this is the new market for Belleville.
Mr. Pacillo, when you brought this project to my attention and asked me to put a team together for you, is it true that one of your directives would be, "Look at zoning ordinance, design the project according to the zoning ordinance, and I don't want to see any substantial variances." Is that true?
Absolutely. My directive is, we don't want uphill battle. We want to comply. We want to do what the town ordinance indicates we need to do and we want to do that to the best of our ability at the highest level possible.
And is also fair to say that the two variances that we will have to address will be a loading dock issue, is that correct, sir?
Yeah.
And what is an architectural issue in terms of whether or not the board wants us to do a couple of bump outs on the building? Is that correct, sir?
That is correct. So the architectural issue, I mean, I'll leave that to our professional, but, I mean, as you see this facade, it's got a beautiful facade. It's got a beautiful, there's no... I think the intent was to make it that there was not a big flat surface on the street level. We have plenty of deviation in the elevation. It looks great. Um, so we don't, we think that's a non-issue, but we defer to the board and to the architect professional.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may we have that marked as applicant's exhibit number one, please?
Yes.
May I do this, sir?
Yes.
Now, let's put this project into context because you came in and you shook hand with our neighbors. And I'm sure when the neighbors got my legal notice, they said, "What in the world is going on? I thought this project was approved. Now why?" So let's go through that issue. This project was approved as is on tonight's agenda and you were in front of the Board of Adjustment and you were approved for how many units?
39, I believe, or less.
And then something changed, didn't it?
The zoning laws changed, the ordinance changed and, uh, you know, the town put some new regulations in place and we're, uh, looking at and complying to those regulations.
So as a developer, because I think it's important to put the facts on the record and not to spin, as a developer, one of the reasons you said you wanted to come to Belleville because you heard the mayor's speech and you were moved by that speech and there was a new day in Belleville and one of the first indicators of that new day in Belleville is a new zoning ordinance.
Correct.
And based upon that zoning ordinance, it attracted a developer like you to take advantage of that ordinance in a proper way.
Correct.
Of following the ordinance and not negatively impacting on the community. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
So now how many units are you asking this board to approve?
56 with three retail spaces.
And parking?
Space for every unit.
Is there anything else you would like to tell the board before you're submitted to cross-examination?
I mean, I really don't have much to tell the board other than, you know, again, I was born and raised in the Nutley-Belleville Bloomfield area. I grew up in Belleville. I went to the school system here. I really believe this is the future of the town. I really believe that the mayor's vision for this to be the future of the town is correct. So, you know, I think it's a great project and I believe in it. I hope they do.
Mr. Chairman, may I just redirect a couple of other questions, which I think would be important? There's a before and after. And we're going to have pictures as to what was there before. Now, I know that this board knows this location better than you and I do. That's a fact. But for the record, what was there before?
There's a two-family on Hilton, which was in extreme disarray. I couldn't believe it because I never went into the property until after we closed. There was the gas station, which was the former Nardone's Gas Station, which I used to buy my gas at when I was a kid. There was the small garage to the right, which I'm not really sure what that was on Franklin Avenue. It was part of the Nardone property. And then there was a dilapidated one-family. After we closed this property and we fenced off and worked there and took a good look at it, I couldn't believe how bad a shape and what a disaster the entire corner was. It was, you know, it was, I looked once, I looked twice, but when I really owned the property, I walked around, it was really in really bad shape.
Is it fair to say that the high-tension wires that cross Franklin Avenue almost act as a natural barrier for what could be considered as a redevelopment area? And I know that's a legal term. We're not using it as a legal term. But does that make sense to you as a developer that you have this little niche? And does it also make sense to you as a developer that this could be a gateway project?
This is a gateway.
Saying, "Here's the new Belleville."
This is a gateway project. When you leave Nutley and you see this building, this is not your ordinary building. This is not what you see, somebody put some vinyl siding up and some, this is a state-of-the-art, security, electronic entrances, Zipcar, Zipcars, uh, electronic charging stations, bicycle courts. I mean, this is, this is the New York model. This is the urban model brought to suburbia where it belongs.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, your question, if across.
Anybody have, any board members have questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening. Michael Sheldon, 47th Light Street. Before I ask Mr. Pacillo a question, I just want to go on record once again by expressing my objection to the legality of this planning board meeting. You continue in violation of Title 40. You continue to have a township employee acting as a Class 4 member. It's an obvious direct violation of 40:55-23D. As your board attorney can certainly...
You raised that same objection when I was covering the last meeting here.
Right.
And I indicated to you that the board had been advised by its regular counsel that it wasn't a violation and that a written statement would be provided to the board when she was returning to sit on the board. I expected that that would be this evening, but there was another problem that prevented that. So you're just going to have to wait till the next meeting.
106 days have now passed since she promised, and your chairman asked her two months ago for a written explanation.
You understand that has to be addressed by the regular board attorney.
Your chairman asked two months ago of Mr. Beato for a written explanation. She has failed to provide even that to him. It's one thing to blow me off, but she has an obligation to your chair to provide him with any requested information and she has...
Are you sure the next meeting she'll provide a written?
I truthfully doubt it. I've consulted with numerous municipal land use law attorneys who have told me there are no exceptions. And on that basis, Mr. Beato will never be able to provide a written explanation, that this is just a stonewalling tactic on her part. And I want you all to be advised.
The board is aware of your objection. They've heard it before. Why don't you just wait and see? She hasn't been at a meeting since she reported...
She was here for the August and September meetings and once again said, "I'm working on it. I'm working on it."
That's when she indicated she would give a written statement, but she hasn't been here since that time.
Just be advised that we are working with counsel right now. We are planning to petition the court for injunctions against every single planning board decision approved since the beginning of this year, which also means getting a stay on all the ordinance changes. I want Mr. Di Biase to be aware of this because he may be in peril with his client of having this case dismissed. Mr. Beato also, as I've talked to various municipal land use law attorneys, they've told me that either she's grossly incompetent or she's guilty of legal malpractice. And she herself is going to be facing sanctions. We're going to file sanctions against her with the OEA.
Why don't you wait until she's here so that she can respond to you? It's really not fair for you to be, for you to be making these comments when she's not here to respond.
Hopefully she'll be back at the next meeting. In the meantime, Mr. Pacillo, I just want one question to ask of you. It's great to see that a Belleville product wants to help our community, but you said that you would be spending millions of dollars on this project. At any point, will you be asking for any tax amendments?
We're doing this with our own money. We're not interested in any tax programs.
No pilots, no LTTs.
No baiting program. This is our money, our project. We'll invest in the town. We're not looking for any type of incentive.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Son?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to the chair, I'd like to discuss the board attorney.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Vincent Frantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue in Belleville. And I'm sorry, what is your name, sir?
John Tenhold.
Tenhold. I could appreciate your answers to Mr. Sheldon, but Mr. Beato go back there. However, you tonight are the attorney of record for this hearing. So I don't know if you're familiar with it, but I have a copy of 40-55D-23. So now you're made aware that there's a member there that according to the municipal land use law shouldn't be sitting there.
I'm not aware of that.
So you're responsible to rule on it.
I'm not aware of that. The argument that you're making, the argument that you're making was raised previously. It was raised at the last hearing that I covered and I indicated then that a decision on that argument had been rendered to the board by its regular board attorney. And I'm told that she indicated that she would be supplying a written statement supporting her advice to the board. I'm not going to offer different advice. I haven't researched that issue. I'm only telling you that the board has a regular attorney who answered that question and the board's relying on that advice.
Okay, so record, for the record, I did the research for you. Very short. It's a paragraph of 40-55D-23. But once again, I want the record to show you are the attorney of record for this meeting. You're responsible to see that it's conducted according to the municipal land use law. So here, give it to the...
You'll mark that. We'll mark that as O1, standing for objector 1, so it's in the record.
And so you're responsible for saying that this meeting is held legally and now you've been advised of the problem you have on there.
Thank you.
To the applicant, we've said you were born in Belleville. You love Belleville.
I do.
All right. You live in Belleville now, huh?
I don't currently live in Belleville.
Okay.
My mother still lives in Belleville. I live in Somerset County. Somerset County.
Okay. Lovely county, yeah. And you went to the quote, "State of the Township Address," correct? It was held in these chambers, right?
It was held in, not in, it's in the park.
Oh, okay.
Were you there?
It wasn't even held, though.
No, it wasn't.
No, because I believe it was an improper place in the way, you know. It was, and I've never, again, for 56 years in Belleville, 51 years...
Mr. Frantantoni, you have a question on this witness? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. You were approved by zoning board for, I think, 36 and 38 units.
I was.
Right. And at the end of that, I thought it was a little over density at that time, but it was a nice building at all.
Thank you.
You know, at that time, at all. So now we come back because of the great State of the Township speech, you now want to enlarge it by almost 40%.
Sir, excuse me a second. Sir, sir. This is just to ask questions. The public will have an opportunity to make whatever statements it wants. You can be sworn in and the board will hear testimony and evidence from you. But right now, you can't be making statements. You can just ask questions.
Well, I made note of everything you said. I'm asking question on notes of what he said.
But I haven't heard a question yet.
Huh?
Other than, "Where do you live?" That's the only question I heard.
Well, then you're not listening correctly. I just asked him, "As a result of the State of the Township Address, he then decided to abandon his previous project and come in with this addition. Is that correct? That was a question. Do I have to write a big question mark on it for you to see?
No, I didn't hear the, "Is that correct?"
Well, that, I just asked. I asked him again. You were approved for a relatively nice unit. Oh, the transcript will show. I liked it. It was just a little, I said, a little over density at that time, right?
So the question is?
The question is, after it stated this township speech, you then decided, you liked the new zoning ordinance that you heard, that you wanted to build a bigger project as a result of hearing that speech?
No, as a result of the new zoning ordinance, we reconsidered the project based on the new ordinance and laws and felt that we can make the same project even better and still comply with all the ordinance aspects.
Okay, so that was your question. And his answer was, as a result of the new zoning ordinance, he decided to build a bigger one. That was an answer. You wanted question, you wanted answer. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions that are followed before you proceed?
Yes. Good evening, guys. My name is Luis Essentio, a new resident of Belleville. I live in 22 Hilton Street. And the question would be, as I was speaking about the parking units and having individual parking for the residents there, what ends up happening is what happens to those folks who come and visit these people? What ends up happening is that on Hilton Street where this project is happening, we have a major problem in terms of parking in general because a lot of the owners have people who rent units there and do not park on the driveways. They actually park in the street, which causes tremendous congestion. I'm presuming that, uh, you know, a building like that attracts visitors to those units and that's going to cause congestion and parking. So is there an answer to that?
I do have an answer to that and we have a traffic expert and I will agree with you of that Hilton Street is challenged with parking. And I understand the concern that the neighbors would have here. That's a valid point. And Joseph Steiger is our traffic expert and he will address that. And then if you have any other questions of that, please ask. But as the attorney for the project, I'm familiar with Hilton Street. I actually did the dental building that's on the corner. That was the last property in Nutley at that time. And even then, the property, the issue of parking comes up. What you say is accurate. Thank you for that.
Because the dentists, they have...
You have to be addressed by the board, ma'am. Do you have a question? You have a question? You have a question?
No, I don't have a question. Whatever you said. That's my question. Daytime is no problem. Nighttime is the problem.
Chris Meyer is 36 Hilton Street. So I'm the property right next to the dentist. Is there consideration right now for the actual, because I know now you guys are considering the business now, because before it was the gym, now it's an actual business. Is there consideration for the employees that are going to be working in that business to consider them for the parking also? Because that was a question I brought up to Mr. Di Biase before. Because the dentist's office has all these employees, so it's not only just the customers, it's the employees that are involved with the parking.
I think you called my office, that's correct, and you were jumbled. Thank you for that. Again, our traffic expert will testify that this project is self-contained. But I will not disagree that Hilton is challenged with parking.
It's a dead-end street. It's very...
Yeah, I will concede that. I know it very well. And if I did not concede that, then I would not be an officer of the court and my credibility would not be accurate. That is an issue. We have designed this according to the zoning ordinance. Let's hear what the traffic expert says on this.
Because just, I guess, speaking for some of the people on the actual, on the actual street, it's such a big project for a dead-end street. If it wasn't a dead-end street, I think things would be so smooth and smooth sailing. But because it's a dead-end street with the amount of new people coming in, it's become such a stress for everybody in the block with the anticipation of an additional 15 units. But that's big.
I think you told me, because I've received several calls from some of the neighbors, I think you told me that Mom has two rental properties there? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Yes, I remember your call. Thank you.
Any other people in the public have a question? If not, we'll proceed. Go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry La Gershio, in Grove Street. I was the chairman of the zoning board who heard this case and we approved it. My question is this, very simple question. Will you be charging any additional money besides the rent for parking?
No.
Will there be parking spaces assigned to each unit?
Each unit will be appropriate with space. It will correspond to their unit. There'll be electronic, so they can only get into the lot via the electronic phone. Additionally, any guests would have to be bused into the building to park. They'll get in. So if you're a resident there...
So you're going to have, what, 57 units, 56, which is...
56 units.
Okay, and how many parking spaces do you have?
57.
I saw 61.
Mr. Chairman, it is 61.
With three are handicapped, correct?
The handicap parking calculation, I'll put on the record with Mr. Steiger, but it will comply with...
But I mean, is that included in the 61?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, is each unit going to be assigned a specific parking space?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on. Thank you.
My name is Johanne de Jango Rele. I live at 25 Hilton Street. If you're going to have stores right now, which before there was no stores, right? And before you stopped the parking on the bottom, right now you say you're going to have a store. Where the rest of the parking going to be? A few hours, 61 parking for the people.
I don't want to sound like a broken record and, by the way, thank you for calling my office. You are also very polite and I understand your concerns. Our traffic expert will say that this project is designed according to the ordinance. So that a developer has one obligation and that's to design it according to the ordinance for parking. So now we'll see whether or not you have comfort once Mr. Steiger testifies to. But remember my comments. I know Hilton Street is challenged and you'll hear that from my expert. And if he doesn't say it, I'll ask the question and I'll make sure he says it.
People actually wait for parking when they come home. Double parking right now. That's where we are right now.
I would imagine it would be more difficult in the evening than it would be during the daytime. And I've traveled that and watched it and what you said is accurate.
Like I said before, we have signed that they're not parking up to, but it's 2:00 AM in the morning. So it doesn't help us anything. And plus, now the question is that we were arguing about the 42 units before. So we came over here so many times and we went down to 36, 37 units. And now we go up to 56 units, which we're going to block in that we can't even see our house anymore. Streets is like, okay, we live in New Jersey, we don't live in New York. This is supposed to be like a New York building, all that stuff. We live in New Jersey. We're covered. We're, you can't even see our street anymore, okay? We have, our house, on the back, it's going to be covered. I mean, we live there over 20, 30, 40 years. Some people live on that block.
Yeah, 50 years.
And...
Do you have a question to do on this witness?
It's a beautiful building. I'm not saying it's a beautiful, but like I said to the one that it wants built, they should, I mean, you've got to understand that we are there and this is a bigger building for that corner. I mean, anybody, you can say, "Oh, it's something beautiful, Belleville." Yes, that would have been something beautiful, Belleville, but it has to be the right size, the right size for that corner. I mean, you want to build four floors right now and you have the same land that you had before. And, you know, instead of stay where you are, you went up.
Ma'am, I understand how everyone here wants an opportunity to say what they want and for the board to hear. And you are going to have that opportunity. And in order for you to have that opportunity, you actually have to be sworn in before you can make statements. you actually have to be sworn in before you can make statements like this.
Okay.
And, and that will come.
All right.
This is just an opportunity to ask questions. The applicant is going to present several witnesses. After each witness testifies, you can ask questions of that witness. When the applicant is finished presenting witnesses, then everyone in the public can get an opportunity to say whatever they wish to say.
Okay.
Each one will be sworn in and you can say whatever you would like.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question I didn't get.
Say your name again, please.
My name is Luis Asensio. Live on twenty-two Hilton Street. I actually just had a question in terms of, you know, impact for noise. I know that wasn't part of the presentation and, you know, might come later. But knowing that you're talking about having fifty-six units, you know, studios and one bedroom, I guess my concern is being that we're in a dead-end street. It's usually very quiet. I guess I have a concern about, you know, noise. You know, and just to see, is there any kind of, you know, noise impact that could possibly be coming in, knowing that we do live on a dead-end street?
Yeah, sound attenuation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have a question of this witness?
Yeah, my name is Emilio Jango Rele. I just want to see, it's okay what you guys do, but you've got to consider everything the way things order. Okay, it's good, but you're trying to put a one gallon of water in after gallon. I understand that. What about the sewer, when everybody flushes sewer? Every time that they flush a sewer, that rain hard, that thing comes out all over the street. Now, you're going to make fifty-six plus up? It'll be a mess. I don't know, what do you say?
Let's hear from the experts. We're going to have some experts testify, engineers, traffic experts, so let's just hold tight. Does anybody else have a question of this witness? If not, Mr. DiBiase, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a question in the back.
Go ahead, sir. Question, not a comment.
Well, all right.
Not a comment, a question.
My name is Nesta Cortez.
Right.
And I live in thirty-seven Belleville. My, thirty-seven Hilton, sorry, thirty-seven Hilton. I'm new to Belleville. You know, I just moved from New York also. And I lived in Park Slope for twenty years. You know, and I know how this feels and, you know, how it turns out. That's why I moved from Park Slope. But my question was, he just gave us a big squeal about millions of dollars he's spending for everything. I'm next door to his construction. And he's actually in my land. I complained to Belleville. They made, notified it on the computer and they just told me to stand by. So, I don't know, have you seen the construction right now?
Yes, I drove by, yes, I did.
And I don't know the rules in Jersey, because I'm brand new. And, but the fence is way too low. The, the noise is way, all the houses shake.
Well, it is empty now. It's empty, isn't it?
It's like doing construction.
They're digging, right?
Yeah, they're digging, right?
Only one person can speak at the time.
All houses shake, like I have a...
What is, what is your question?
My question is, he's spending so much money on this building, how, why is the construction supported? You know, like...
Why is the construction done poorly?
Yes.
Okay, why is the construction done poorly? We haven't started construction yet, we're in the demolition phase. We can guarantee that the construction will not be done poorly and will meet every code that's applicable in the town of Belleville and in the state of New Jersey.
Ma'am, you have a question?
Yes.
I live on thirty... My name is Georgia Melos, I live on thirty-three Hilton Street.
Okay, yeah, please, say your name again, spell your last name, please. Wait, when I'm done talking, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Georgia, N-E-L-L-O-S, M-E-L-L-O-S.
Sorry, I just couldn't take down the spelling while I was talking. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I live on thirty-three Hilton Street. Now, you're saying that the construction, yeah, hasn't started. You're dropping everything down, you know, turning it down. You know that you're doing this kind of work winter time. It's, last week, we had a wind and all the fence went down all over. I took pictures. Dangerous. Anybody could have gotten hurt. Now, could you just put those fences a little bit higher and a little bit deeper? Put some concrete in there to keep those fences? So they don't have to go all over the place.
So the question is, can we rectify the fence?
Yes.
We, we hired a subcontractor that is known throughout the state of New Jersey, does work all over the state of New Jersey, including for the Port Authority, Newark Airport, and he uses that same exact fence in all these other municipal projects. We did have the incident, incidents where a fence blew over across the wind. I subsequently instructed him to drive fence posts on the entire perimeter and secure the fence so that will not happen again. That will be happening in the next several days. So, yeah, it did happen and we have rectified that problem.
It should have never happened in the first place.
Again, I...
With all that money that you're spending.
Mr. DiLorenzo, is that the fence they use up to, called for the town? Yes, thank you. Anybody else in the public have questions of this witness? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Ellie McCartney, thirty-five Hilton Street.
Spell your last name.
N-A-C-A-R-T, E-N-Y. Thank you. I just wanted to know if you were going to lose any of our property in our backyards. We were told that we weren't, but now we're told that we are.
That's a legal question, and the answer to that is that we will not be taking property from any neighborhood.
No?
No.
Not our backyards or anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Right, welcome.
Any other questions in the public? Now, Mr. DiBiase, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Corso, come on up and have some fun. Do you want to stay here? Mr. Chairman, may he stay here when he gets on the easel? Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
You have to be sworn in place.
Oh, so sorry. Please read your name. Do you swear to tell the truth? Can you not truth in nothing but the truth to help God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
It's Stephen Corso, C-O-R-S-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Corso, please give the board the benefit of your educational background and any licenses that you hold.
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. I've been involved in the field of architecture for about forty years. I've testified before the Belleville zoning board many times. I've testified in most towns in Essex County, hanging in a lot of the counties in New Jersey. I've been doing buildings like this for about twelve years.
Well, except for what it says on the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Corso, you have one problem. You must speak louder.
Okay.
All right? And if you don't, I'm going to stop you. You have to speak loud.
Okay.
Have you been retained by the developer in order to design this project?
Yes.
Matter of fact, you were also the architect with the original design in front of the Board of Adjustments, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you testified in front of that board?
Yes.
And you remember the chairman who was month after month after month on this application, right?
Yes, I do.
Matter of fact, he got tired of seeing you, didn't he?
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe.
He liked the building.
All right, good. Why don't you take us through his building?
Okay, we have, it's a, it's a very durable building. It's brick and concrete, the trim, you know, in the offset areas and the lintels and sills are concrete. The rest of the building is brick, except for the roof that you see. And then we have traditional, like, paned windows. Instead of just storefront blank glass, the windows have individual panes in them for the first floor. And as part of what's suggested or required in the amenity section of the ordinance, of new ordinance, they want the building to be designed with a base and a middle and a top. And we've done that. The first floor where the real retail is and where some of these recesses are is clearly, you can see, is a base. The middle is the two-story section that houses the first two floors of apartments. And the top is the mansard roof with the towers which catch the top of the building. One of the other sections of the zoning, and Mr. DiBiase mentioned this, and Mr. Corso discussed it, is that it calls for a maximum uninterrupted length of thirty feet. We have four sections of the building where it's more than thirty feet. One's about fifty-one, and then it ranges in the forties and then down to thirty-four. But clearly, what I've done here with the different volumes, the vertical and horizontal elements, we meet the intent of that. It's obviously that the intent of that is not to make it a boring, blank building, and this certainly is not. In fact, I think if we meet the definition by having stepbacks of at least eighteen inches on the facade for the floors above the retail, I think it would detract from the design we have here. Because it has some nice vertical elements, as Ings announced. It has further, you know, recesses where the retail area is. We have a nice tower as a feature that would actually be seen from, you know, a distance that could be an identity element for Belleville. And then we stepped the building down and back towards the neighbors. I'd like to show you an aerial view of what was there before.
Mr. Chairman, may we mark that as A2, please?
Yes.
And it, you can see, this is the, the project right here. It has the two-family house, the single-family house, and the two commercial buildings that Mr. Corso was describing before. And then you can see, the two-family house that was on the site is only about four feet from the property line. We're set back over here on the end, sixteen feet. So we've given that extra view for the neighbors. And then, the way the building steps back from the corner, it actually, it actually steps back towards the existing streetscape. And, and when you get to that section of the building that's toward the neighbors, it actually is about what the average of those, those houses are. So we've designed this to fit into the neighborhood. The other thing about the way it's been designed to fit into the neighborhood, the... This is, this is the main floor of the building, it's a typical floor.
Let me just stop you here. This is actually a set of plans that you're looking at that each board member has.
That's correct. You have this set of plans. And if you look on any of the floor plans above the first floor, I'm showing you the second floor right here. We did it where we, where we have the largest portion of the building on Hilton. Mr. DiBiase, why don't you just mark the architectural bendings as A3 and then you can refer to which sheet.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay, this is the A2. This is the Franklin Avenue facade, and the Hilton Street facade is here. You can see how I made the section of the building that was closest to the Hilton Street neighbors much shallower, so that sort of fits the fabric of what's on the street there. And you can see the depth of the houses here? We've made this smaller so we can approximate that difference.
Mr. Corso, we're looking at the two sides, the Hilton side and the Franklin Avenue side.
Yes.
What do the, what do the other two sides look like?
The other two sides are similar. They have the, the base, the middle and the top. This is, this is the Franklin Avenue side, that's the Hilton side. This is the side that is by the right of way where the power lines are. You can see, this is above the parkroom here, okay? And then we have the two stories, the first two stories residential space and then the mansard roof with the peaks and the dormers. Another element of the design is, it really has a lot of that vertical division like they're asking for in the amenities, because these dormers give it, you know, a vertical, different vertical spaces.
And for the record, Mr. Corso, the material on the two sides that we're not seeing on the exhibit will be what?
All brick, just like the fronts, with concrete trim, the same roof material, fiberglass, dimensional fiberglass roof.
No corner cutting?
No corner cutting at all. The whole building is in quality materials. And then the side that's towards, the opposite side from Franklin Avenue is here. It's the same, it's the same format, parking level. It has the middle with the first two residential floors and the top with the roof. And then this is the section here that goes down Hilton Street and faces the neighbors. So this is, this part here is set back further, and this part is a lot smaller where it approaches the neighbors.
And the parking is underneath the building, sir?
The parking is all underneath the building.
And as an architect, within the framework of sound architectural principles, the parking does comply with the ordinance?
It does, we have a little more than required.
And when you were in front of the Board of Adjustment, there was a footprint that you presented to the board, correct?
Yes.
What happened to that footprint with this plan?
It didn't change, except for minor changes to the front where the planters are. It's, but basically, the footprint didn't change, the same square footage, the same format.
Does the building have an elevator?
Yes, it does.
What other amenities?
We have, well, there's a waiting area for like Uber, you know, you know, offset from the lobby. It has the retail spaces. On the fourth floor, we have a club room on the corner of the building, and it has, it has some gym equipment, which is required by the ordinance in the amenity section. And it has a kitchen on the roof. We have a landscape terrace which has a fire pit and a barbecue area, which is also required in the amenity section. And then in the basement, we have the normal utility space and mechanical space, but we also have a room for bicycle storage, which can take twenty bicycles.
If you, if you complete your presentation, I have a mop-up question. Are you ready for it?
Okay.
All right, get ready now. Within the framework of sound architectural principles, can you render an opinion, as an architect, whether this building fits in with the neighborhood? It will not negatively impact on the neighborhood or the zoning ordinance or the intent of the zone plan? Do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I know. We designed it so that it would not have a negative impact. And I designed it so it would fit into the zone ordinance. Except for where we felt we didn't have the need, the loading space, which the traffic expert's going to talk about, and what I described as the stepbacks that the, you know, that the ordinance requires, which we didn't, which I feel is not going to be a help to the building because of the way it's designed now.
Now, I know you like the building. Is there anything you don't like about this building?
No.
See, he's talking like an architect. They never change. Everything they do is perfect. All right, thank you, good job.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, if the board wants us to break up the facade anymore and does not agree with our expert testimony, we will certainly listen to the board on that. Your witness, Corso.
Does any board member have questions of this witness?
No.
The parking underground, there's no, is it fireproof, right, the ceilings or something?
Yeah, it has a two-hour rating above the parking. Actually, it's a three-hour concrete deck. And it's like a platform that's constructed right above the parking and it's all built on top of the deck.
Mr. Corso, are the extra units basically on the mansard level?
Yes, they're all up here.
And that's a good question, thank you, Mr. Condi. For the record, even though you have added a level, this complies with the ordinance in terms of height, is that correct, sir?
It does, yes.
No variance needed?
Correct.
Again, architecturally, no variance is needed, with the exception of what?
The loading zone.
And whether or not we have to break the facade up, correct?
Correct.
And you're recommending that we do not break the facade?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If no board members have any further questions of this witness, we'll open it to the public for questions of this witness.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Flood Street. First question, what is the height of that tower on the corner of Franklin and Hilton? Because that is the tallest part of your structure.
It's fifty-four feet nine inches.
54. And what is the maximum height for?
It's 50 feet, but that's an exception. There's two sections of the ordinance that allow that as an exception. It allows ornamental towers and it allows elevators to go above the roof, as long as it's not more than 25% of the roof area. And this is both. It's an ornamental tower and an elevator.
Mr. DeLorenzo, concur? Okay, thank you. When we heard this case earlier this year before the zoning board, I expressed concern about the elevator service. I acknowledged a moment ago that there's an elevator.
Yes.
But all the residences are on the second floor, upwards. So in the event that the elevator is out of commission, because elevators do break down, how do any residents who may have various ambulatory problems gain access, egress to their, to the building? I had asked about, when you were before us in February, about a second elevator. If I remember correctly, Mr. DeLorenzo said that's something he would take care of when the construction plans were presented to him. But I wanted to ask both of you, if a second elevator is necessary, can that be accommodated, Mr. DeLorenzo, without radically altering the nature of this project? Can you say at this moment if a second elevator, with the number of units that are now proposed? Because we approved, when the zoning board heard this, it was 28 one-bedroom units and 10 studio. Now it's 14 studio and 42 one-bedrooms. So we've gone from 38 to 56 units. Does that necessitate, at this point, can you say if that's going to necessitate a second elevator for this?
I don't believe it will be, but when I get to the construction drawings, I'll see. But I don't think so.
Yeah, it does not. It does not. I've designed many buildings like this with 50 units, 70 units, and more than that. Usually, when we get to 100 units and above, we put a second elevator.
But I still think it's not advisable. You have a large number of people living in this building dependent on a single elevator. When that elevator is disabled for whatever reason, what do people who really do have trouble navigating staircases do to get in and out of the building?
Well, they get the elevator fixed as soon as possible, and then the management will, you know, accommodate whatever they have.
I just think it would make more sense for the safety of the residents to have a second elevator, because your building is rather large. The elevator is in the corner, if I remember correctly. It's in the corner closest to the intersection of Franklin and Hilton. So the residents who are on the distant corner are going to have quite a walk to get to and from the elevator. It would make more sense, in my humble opinion, to have a second elevator to kind of split the difference and to minimize the amount of walking your residents are going to have to do to get in and out of the building.
Well, you know, a 56-unit building, you'd be surprised. The elevator doesn't get used that often. Most of the time, it's almost as if, I mean, it's almost like the traffic generation. People come in and out of the buildings mostly, you know, in the morning and the evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion based upon this concern. If the board does move forward with this application, can we rely on our experts? And if our experts believe that another elevator is needed, then at that point in time, our client would comply with that? Is that a sensible, practical way of handling this?
Want to move to the screen today? Sounds good, Mr. DeLorenzo.
Thank you.
Next question. In regard to the 42 one-bedroom units, I don't have the floor plan in front of me. Is there any way the one-bedroom units, are they going to have studies or dens? Or is there any way that another room could be sectioned off in the proposed one-bedroom units, turn them?
No, they're not designed, they're not designed in a way that would accommodate that. We've been very efficient with the units. If you listen to Mr. Pacillo when he spoke, the trend now for the occupants that he's looking for is for smaller units. And most of the units are very small, even the one-bedrooms. They're not overly large.
What is the typical square area for your one-bedroom units?
There's 700 square feet. The biggest one is 840 square feet.
All right, okay, all right. I also want to address this, because what I've done with other applications, and that is a concern. We as people worry, is there going to be a partition? After the CO is issued, is a wall going to go up? Is a bedroom going to be there? That's a problem. So what I suggest to other boards is that if the application goes forward, in the resolution, there will actually be a statement saying that this can't happen. And if it does happen, of course, Mr. DeLorenzo would be there to find it and change it. But that's not our heart. We're not here to spin this. We're doing studios, and we're doing one-bedrooms.
I know there has been some recent discussion on part of the council and members of the planning board about tweaking the newest changes to the zoning ordinance. I know the rule is that there's going to be one parking spot per bedroom, but after that was implemented, now they're considering adding to that an additional bedroom required for any dens or studies that may be.
An additional parking space?
Yes, an additional parking space, so to prevent that little play where den, after the fact, is turned into another bedroom. Last question. As far as the parking is concerned on the ground floor, it looks like for the most part, the ground floor is walled off. There seems to be very little openings for air exchange. So my question is, with 56 cars potentially parked in that area, what are you doing for proper air exchange, and where is that, where are those fumes being vented?
Mr. Corso, let me jump in on that, because you're going to hear testimony on that from our traffic expert and our engineer, and we have addressed that.
All right, I'll wait for that.
Because that's important also.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that courtesy.
All right, that's it. That's it for me right now.
Thank you.
Chris Ramirez, 36 Hilton Street. I have a couple of questions. Are any of these apartments allocated towards handicapped accessibility apartments?
They're all handicapped, adaptable, which is what the code requires.
Okay. In regards to the barbecue area, where is that exactly in the orientation?
It's on the roof.
It's on the roof, but where abouts?
It's kind of about halfway along the Hilton Street side of the building.
On that Hilton Street side? So is that in, I know it can't be any closer, I know it's on the roof. How does that go about orienting in regards to privacy of the neighbors?
Well, it's behind, it's about eight feet back, and it's behind a three-and-a-half foot high parapet. So you wouldn't see the barbecue pit towards.
Or they won't be able to look down as the neighbors either?
Well, anybody can look down over the railing, but the...
Well, that's what I was...
Yeah, it's a roof parapet, it's three-and-a-half feet high.
Okay. And where are the emergency exits located?
There's three exits to the building. There's one in the middle of the southern section of the building. There's one in the middle of the Hilton Street side section of the building, it's one at the corner.
Any other people in public have a question of this witness?
Victor Mafucci, 61 Continental Avenue. 56 units, 61 parking places, correct? The charging stalls are not considered parking places, are they?
That's a question for the traffic consultant. He could probably answer that better than me.
You made a statement that all the parking was under the building. I thought it was a portion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you corrected me. We do have parking that's out behind, yeah.
Behind the other people's back door.
It's out to the right here, and the engineer will be able to put it there.
On the drawing that shows the actual roof, you have the city area and all that on the one side. What are all the little squares, the rest of the roof?
Those are planters with planters. Oh, those are air conditioners. Air conditioning.
Okay, thank you.
One is a generator.
Any other questions from the public?
Just one last question I forgot to ask. When we heard this back in February with the zoning board, this person had just acquired a strip of land. The township sold a small parcel of land in the southeast corner as a means to lower the density. The agreement during the zoning board hearing was that that land would just remain as is, would remain undeveloped, and the people whose properties but that land, they would still have access to that. Is that going to remain in perpetuity with your proposal, that that little triangular stretch of land that runs adjacent to the PSENG right-of-way, that that parcel of land remains undeveloped with this project?
I could jump in on that. I actually was the attorney that represented developer in that closing with the tenant. And that went out to a bid and so forth and so on, it's public record.
Right.
I think we purchased it for $38,000, about $38,000. We will not be putting a building on that, but we will be using that if we need for parking. We will not impact on the neighbors also. So there is a modification from what was in front of the chairman's application that he saw in front of the Board of Adjustment. This is a new, a new application under the new ordinance. And I'm going to sound like a broken record, but we're here to comply with the new ordinance.
So we'll learn later on tonight what's going to become of that small strip of plan?
Yes.
You now own.
Yes. We did take title.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you could just answer that now. He wants to know, how is that going to be used? Is that going to be addressed?
We're going to use, part of it's going to be used for parking, part of it will be used for rec space for the dog run. It will be flowers, planting, some open space. And then the more specifics we'll get, probably Joe Steiger and our engineer will talk about that.
Thank you.
But there will be no building on that land.
Just to reiterate on that, what is going to be the height of that barrier? I guess...
What's the barrier?
So with a little, that wall, what is going to be the height of that wall?
Six feet.
Any other questions of this witness? Pedro Lino?
Good evening. George Pedelino, 14 Hilton Street. One of my concerns is, the building is right on the corner, and access in and out of Hilton Street might be a little difficult, getting your view to the left as you try to pull out with your car.
It's not right on the corner. This plan doesn't show that, but the site plan is...
Okay, see, I thought it was right on the corner.
No, it's about 14 feet.
If we just change the entrance to a 45-degree entrance, take, cut the corner off the building so it would be easier to see up the street, that's all.
Well, there's plenty of sight distance. We have experts that will testify.
Okay, so it is 10 feet off the street?
It's about 14 feet off.
And Franklin Avenue also?
No, Franklin Avenue, it's right off Franklin Avenue. Parts of it, some parts of it are three feet back.
Because I know if you have a fence, it has to be a tent, it has to be a tent with set back.
Well, the building is allowed to be right on the property line. I think we'll lay around, except for maybe the far sides. But on the street front, it's allowed to be right on the property line, but you would have to do some indication in that case for sight distances. But we don't, we're far enough back, way back from Hilton Street that we don't have a sight distance issue.
Okay, that was my concern, because even now with the fence there, I know that's right on the corner, but it makes it difficult sometimes to see out the pole. It kind of knows your way out just to get out safely.
That's true. The fence does that.
Yes.
I tested it myself.
And I thought, yeah, building is anywhere near that location.
But let me give you the good news, though. We did a site triangle study on that, and we meet the safety standards, and Mr. Steiger will testify for that.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you for that.
My name is Etor Canova, E-T-T-O-R-E, last name is Canova, C-A-N-V-A. I'd like to address the parking lot in the back of our homes. I'm the owner for 29 and 33 Hilton. So what I understand, we have another park in the back yards, okay? So what is he telling us, and I was smelling a fume in cars 24/7 in our back yards? What's the answer for that?
The answer for that is that our expert witnesses will address those issues in the following time.
And that is not going to help us. What are you trying to tell me?
I'll have the traffic engineer address that issue for you, sir. You have another question?
No, that's my concern.
All right. When the traffic expert comes up, you can ask that question. Anybody else in the public have a question?
Just for clarification, the wall that's six feet tall, that will be going all the way to the triangular area where now, according to the plans I saw today, are going to have 16 parking spaces?
I don't know if that's...
No, 14, I'm sorry, 14 parks.
I don't know how many parking spaces are there. That's an engineering question, really, but the wall does go.
I'm going by the plan.
Yeah, this is not my, that's not my plan.
Oh, that's not your plan. I'm just saying. So what's going to happen is the wall's going to go all the way down.
Yeah, it's going to go all the way down.
And the dog run, from what I saw, has been moved to Franklin Avenue.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Anybody else in the public? If not, Mr. DiBiase, would you like to...
All right, Mr. Corso, you made it. You don't like to testify, I thought.
That's not true.
All right, let's get to Joe Steiger up, who loves to testify.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to tell the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name, that's all you ask.
My name is Joseph Steiger, S-T-A-I-G-A-R.
Mr. Steiger, please give the board the benefit of your educational background and any professional licenses that you hold.
Yes. I have a bachelor's science, master's science degree, civil engineering, New Jersey Institute Technology. Also been an adjunct professor of traffic engineering courses at NJIT. I have a professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states in the Northeast, professional planner's license as well. But I'll be here as a traffic engineer, providing expert testimony in that field. Been a long time since I've been before the planning board, but I've been through the Board of Adjustment on several occasions over the last year, two years, and years gone by.
Well, except...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are actually the traffic expert for the original rendition.
Yes.
That was applied to Mr. Del Del Shil's board, is that correct?
Correct.
How did you do there?
I think we did pretty good. We came away with an approval.
Okay, good. All right, now, you've heard some of the concerns from the neighbors, right?
Yes.
But you've also had the opportunity of having conversations with Mr. DeLorenzo. By the way, your professional team was very courteous to us. Mr. DeLorenzo, Mr. Huritz, they met with us, they took our phone calls, they gave us good advice, they were very generous with their time, and we'd like to put that on the record.
I agree.
Having given some direction, is it true that we comply with the ordinance for parking?
Yes.
There's no question about that.
Actually, we exceed. We exceed the parking requirements by one space, but we do exceed.
And I'm going to go through some of the questions that some of the neighbors had. This is the premise. Hilton Avenue is challenged. There are two families there. On one side is notably, no overnight parking. There are rental houses there. The one gentleman that stood up, represent his mother, she has two two-bedroom houses there. So it's challenged. Having said that, will our parking plan negatively impact on whatever is going on on Hilton Street today?
No, and I agree with the neighbors. We've taken parking counts, surveys, at night, along Franklin Avenue, as well as the side streets. And Hilton Street is packed with parked cars. There's sufficient parking on Franklin Avenue. As you know, we have the PSENG right-of-way that's just south of us, and there's really no parking generators that use Franklin Avenue. At nighttime, and I'm talking about nighttime, after 11 o'clock PM, when most of the residents in the area are home, we found 32 vacant parking spaces on street within a one-block distance of the site. So whereas I totally agree with the neighbors that Hilton Street is, I'll say, at capacity, there may be even double parking, I never saw it, but it certainly probably occurs, there is open area along Franklin Avenue and some of the other side streets in the area.
If someone wanted to walk a little bit?
Yes, well, one block or one and a half blocks, yeah, that's it, which is a reasonable walking distance. One of the key aspects I think are going to offset is, A, we are going to be self-sufficient in parking. If there is any overflow, it's absolutely going to be minimal. It may be the instance where you have a couple of guests in the building that would park on the street. But I believe that the easy parking area for those people is going to be Franklin Avenue. They're not going to turn out to Hilton Street and see this mass of parked cars when they just pass vacant spaces on Franklin Avenue. The other key aspect here is that, you know the site now, expansive driveways for that gas station and for the homes that are being removed. We're actually adding two additional spaces on Hilton Street and six additional spaces on Franklin Avenue, where you can't park now. There are driveways, you can't park in front of a driveway, it's against the law. Those driveways will be closed, they'll be curbed. We're going to replace them with one single access driveway on Franklin Avenue. And I like to say that although this application just has access on Franklin Avenue, our first application to the Board of Adjustment had our access on Hilton Street. We've heard neighbors, we took their concerns into effect, and we moved that, we closed that, there's no access anymore in this application, and that was changed from Hilton to Franklin Avenue. So we're not adding any traffic at all to Hilton Street. All our traffic stays on Franklin Avenue. So in that aspect, I think we're going to be of benefit to the neighbors. We're not generating any, we're not generating eight additional parked cars on the street by our development, but we are providing eight additional spaces. They'll be open to the public. So I think we're going to alleviate parking conditions as opposed to exacerbating any issues that are out there.
Couple follow-up questions. I think Mr. Pedelino asked an important question. Site triangles are always a safety concern.
Yes.
Can you address that issue?
Yes. And there are standards. Site triangles, as you come to Hilton, in this case, as you come to Hilton Street, look to your left, look to the right, make sure that you have adequate site visibility so that if you make a right-hand turn, looking to your left, or a left-hand turn in both directions, that you see cars coming, that you don't pull out and cause an accident. So we've stepped the building back, you'll hear from our site engineer, you've heard from Mr. Corso, the architect, we stepped it back from Hilton Street sufficiently enough enough to have that site visibility down the street. Franklin Avenue is a county road. We're going to need county approval as well. They have site distance requirements for site triangles, just as your township engineer has them, and we meet those standards. We far exceed those standards.
All right, that's good. And for the record, we have local knowledge about Franklin Avenue and why there isn't it.
Yes.
Why. Is parking on both sides of Franklin Avenue there?
Yes.
And when we get to Belville, we don't have the overnight restrictions, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, too, right?
Yes, only on Hilton Street are that restriction, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Okay. Worst-case scenario, I want to have a big party, and it happens once a year, and the neighbors are going to ask you that hypothetical, right? And I invite twenty people. What's going to happen?
Well, most of these are studio apartments. They're one-bedrooms. It's not very conducive to parties of large sizes such as that. But we have availability on the street. We have that availability on Franklin Avenue, that you can park up to thirty-something cars at night, which is the worst condition. During the day, there's even more. So if it's not a late-night party, we have more than sufficient parking.
Okay, but I don't want to use my little apartment. I'm going to use the all-purpose room, so I can get twenty people in there. Would you, as a traffic expert, say that it would be a common sense approach for a host to say, there's parking on Franklin Avenue, both sides, walk a little bit?
Right, in order to provide that additional information to your guests as well, yes. But again, I think it's going to be very obvious as you come to the site, Hilton Street is tucked away, you've got Franklin Avenue, and as you approach the site, you're going to be using Franklin Avenue, you're going to see the parking availability, you're going to take the first parking spaces convenient to the site that you're going to see, which is Franklin Avenue.
Now, we'll talk about the parking that's under the building. You were asked to actually do a study to make sure that the internal circulation would be practical, safe, and would work. Address that issue.
Yes, and that was one of the township engineer's comments, to provide turning templates, which we did provide that. And the parking spaces are, for the most part, standard parking spaces. We have twenty-four feet, in many cases, more than twenty-four feet driveway width, which is the standard. Twenty-four feet is standard. In some cases, we have twenty-five or more feet. Where the two electric car, and I'll point to them on the plan, two electric stations are opposite compact spaces, we have twenty-one point one feet. But those are small, again, those are small compact. So the only place that there's really a constraint is behind those two compact spaces. They are for compact cars. They're going to be assigned to tenants that have compact cars, and what we did was we provided the turning templates, again, for a compact car, in order to make those turns easily in and out of those parking spaces.
And again, Mr. Steiger, the compact cars are allowed under the ordinance?
Yes.
So we're not asking for any waiver for aisle width?
Correct.
We're not asking for any waiver for parking sizes, correct?
Yep.
Is it true that you have designed this parking plan so that it complies in all aspects with the Belville ordinance?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, that's under the building. Now, let's go outside the building where the neighbors have asked questions. Take us through that.
There is a parking area, as was explained previously, for fourteen spaces that you will be able to access, again, through the parking garage, go through it, and then park in the spaces, the fourteen spaces in the rear. Those are standard spaces, nine-by-eighteen, twenty-four-foot aisles. So they're easily accessible, too. They're going to be the least used. When I say that, the more primary spaces or more desirable spaces are going to be the ones in the garage. You heard from the applicant, Mr. Basillo, what his expectations are. He believes, and I believe, that based on the type of tenants that we will have in this building, they're going to have, some of them are not going to have cars. So the sixty-one spaces for fifty-six units, they're not all going to be filled. Where they're going to be empty or least used are going to be in the rear over here. The primary ones would be under the building. They're shielded. They're going to be out of the rain, out of the snow, so they're going to be really the first ones used. So the activity back there is going to be very minimal. It's going to be much less activity than on Hilton Street. Car activity on Hilton Street, people parking, residents, and whatever interaction you may have on Hilton Street, it's going to be, that will be more intensive than the fourteen spaces in the back.
Now, there's a perception, and I understand that, because we always try to put ourselves in the neighbor situation. There's a perception that our project is taking away the backyard of some of the neighbors. Would you address that issue?
Well, again, you'll hear from the site engineer as well, we're not using anybody else's property or having any negative impact on anybody else's property, particularly our neighbors in the back. So again, they will be able to use their property just as they are able to use it now.
And is it true that the wall that we're proposing is not going to be cinder block, it's going to be a decorative wall that will actually enhance architecturally our project and we believe the neighbors' backyards? Is that true, sir?
We are a residential project. They are residences that are nearby us. This is not going to be industrial-type wall. It's going to be a decorative residential-looking wall.
Okay. Now, this is the big question. You ready for it? Within the framework of established traffic principles that are accepted, can you render an opinion as to whether or not this parking plan under the building and outside will not negatively impact on the neighbors, on the zone plan, on the master plan?
Well, I think the first test of that, do we meet the township's ordinance requirements, which emphatically we've said, yes, we do. We've designed this specifically. In fact, we exceed to certain degrees the requirements for it. So in that aspect, we don't. I looked at it independently of the ordinance. What is our experience in these types of developments, of these types of rental units? They will generate less than one car per unit. So our sixty-one spaces will certainly suffice for the fifty-six units at night, when the residents are there, and suffice for the minor retail that we have during the day. And one of the key aspects is there is that the sixty is required, because we have the residential and the retail, providing sixty-one. There is a shared parking. So where the retail demand will occur midday, when the residents are primarily out doing what they need to do, either work or shopping or running errands, and then the reverse happens at night, retail closes, there's nobody parking there for the retail anymore, and then the residents come back. So there's a nice synergy between the two types of uses that can share parking together. Your ordinance requires the resident requirement plus the retail requirement is the sixty spaces. In reality, it doesn't work that way, because there's that shared activity of two compatible uses on the site. So again, we will have sufficient parking on our site, and as I pointed out before, we're added benefit of picking up spaces on the street. Eight public parking spaces are being added to Hilton and to Franklin.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, your witness across.
I have a question, as a traffic expert. Right now, Hilton has permit parking only from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM?
Yes.
Do you think if we change those hours, that the council would maybe consider changing those hours? It would benefit the existing people on Hilton?
I think so. Two AM is kind of late. I think making it earlier and maybe, and I don't know what creates a problem. Are people that are not residents parking there earlier than two AM?
Well, I guess the problem there is, that's the first block in Belville. Nutley, you can't park overnight. So that permitted people from Nutley parking overnight. But my concern is guests from here or whatever, residents from here parking on Hilton, and these people are having a hard time parking. If we change that time to negate outsiders parking, not just overnight, but visiting, I don't know what the hours, twelve o'clock, maybe eleven PM, would be only for the people who have the permit. Would you think that would help?
Yes. If it is outsiders, let's say, or Nutley neighbors, or people from the area not of Hilton, are parking there because they don't park in Nutley, yes, I agree with that.
Deputy Chief, do you think that's something that...
I think it's a good idea, but, I mean, again, obviously, I don't know when, years ago, when that ordinance was in effect, but it was put in effect for the overnight parking. I understand what you're saying, but on the same token, what if someone on Hilton Street is having a party, and we alter those hours to, say, eight o'clock, then their guests won't be able to park on Hilton Street either, then they'd be in violation of the ordinance. So I think the hours, two AM to six AM, I think originally, again, I don't remember what year it was done, but I think those hours were put in place just primarily for the overnight parking on the border streets for Nutley. Again, if someone on Hilton Street has a party, technically, their residence would be in violation of that ordinance, and I don't think they want to have a birthday party and have their guests get parking there. So I think that's why the hours are kind of what they are. I mean, again, that's something that between the police department and the council could be discussed about changing them, but I don't know if the hours can be changed that much, that it won't affect the residents of Hilton Street as well.
Deputy Chief, you think we could have an agreement that we look into the chairman's suggestion, because maybe there is a balance that would work for everybody?
Of course, we could look into it. I mean, obviously, if the council chooses to change something, they'll get input on something like that from the police department, and then ultimately, the decision would have to be me. But just talking about it now, that would be one concern of mine, if I lived on Hilton Street. Like, if I had a party, though I got to send my guests home. And one question that comes up, and I know it's probably obvious, this complex now, the address is going to be Franklin Avenue, right?
Yes.
So no one that lives there will be able to get a parking permit for Hilton Street, because they all live on Hilton Street, they live on Franklin Avenue.
That is accurate. Thank you for putting that on the record.
I should have done that.
But of course, anything could be looked at.
One good marriage for me. Thank you, Chief. Retail parkers, how do they gain access to the parking garage?
There's going to be a key fob, and I'm thinking is that the employees may have that ability. We don't want the public going in there. So we'll have some security.
Any other members?
So I ask a question, being I came up. I'm going to think, obviously, police and fire. The whole complex is going to be secure getting in there, right, key fobs? What if there's an emergency? How is police and fire going to get access to get in there?
We would provide, and we would coordinate.
We have other locations that would give us the key fobs or the pass codes or whatever.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Any other members in the board have questions of this witness? If not, we'll open it to the public for questions of this witness. Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening. Again, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Floyd Street. Mr. Steiger, I just want to thank you initially for confirming that with this project, there won't be any driveway access onto Hilton. When you were before, the zoning board earlier this year, that was a great concern to the zoning board, especially our chair, Mr. Del Garcia, who led the charge to make sure that there wouldn't be any driveway access for this project to help accommodate the existing residents of Hilton Street. So I'm glad that you went on record earlier saying that no driveway, all the access to this is from Franklin Avenue.
Correct.
Correct, all right, all right. You did mention earlier that you counted one night the number of on-street parking spaces that were available after eleven PM. I think you said thirty-two?
Minimum of thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Might sound like a somewhat silly, facetious question, but what night did you do that count?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure it wasn't, you know, July Fourth or Monday weekend when everybody was elsewhere.
Or during Hurricane Sandy. It was back in February and in March, so we took two different days.
You have the dates?
February twenty-second. Now, these were done in 2018, the original application. So February twenty-second, March fifth.
March fifth, all right, thank you. Just as a follow-up to the question asked by Deputy Chief Corbo, if there is any need for emergency vehicles, a fire truck, for example, to get to the back of the building, if there's, God forbid, there's a fire, how would our fire trucks get access to the back of this structure?
Well, I think the last thing a fire, in my experience, fireman would want to do is bring his truck into a building that potentially is burning or is burning. So they wouldn't go through the garage in order to get there. And, you know, they would have to run the hoses along the sides of the building to fight it. So the fire truck would sit either on Hilton or on Franklin Avenue, and they'd fight the fire from there.
Now, that's interesting. I realize that they wouldn't, if the building's on fire, they're not going to come inside. But you have surrounding walls on the other side, so would that be an impediment to the fire department in trying to arrest the fire? You've got concrete walls that are six feet high. How would that impact treating a fire in the back of the building?
Again, they would park the trucks on the two frontage roadways and fight the fire from there. They will have access to the rear of the buildings from there. You know, you can get from the dog runs, well, you know, those parking spaces there or on Hilton. So there is accessibility to the sides of the building. But certainly, at the two frontages, they would have total access.
And would you happen to know where are the fire hydrants, the closest hydrants to this?
No, I don't. Okay. I know it's been a while since I looked at that plan in that aspect. Again, our site engineer will have that answer for it.
Mr. Sheldon, deputy fire chief.
Would you happen to know where the hydrants are?
You know where?
Mr. Pedalino, might be, no.
Yeah, around twenty-five Hilton Street.
It's from the night house, thirty-five.
There's one directly across the street, that's a Nutley hydrant, but we can still use it.
Good.
On Franklin Avenue. There's another one up Franklin Avenue on the same side of the street. It's a Belville hydrant, it's right under the power lines.
We got better water.
And the last question I had asked earlier, but you're the appropriate person to answer. For the cars that are parked inside the building, air circulation, what are you doing to park in the event of fumes, and where are the fumes being exhausted?
And that is a building code requirement in terms of having adequate ventilation in order to get those fumes out of there. So there'll be ventilation in to and from the building.
According to the building code.
Yeah. We haven't gotten to that detail yet in terms of the design of the building, so I can't directly answer that, but there are building code requirements for that.
Are these fumes typically vented through the roof to...
Yeah, there's, again, there's building code requirements from property lines. I think it's ten feet. You can't have an exhaust closer than ten feet. So then, therefore, it has to go up through the roof.
Now, my concern is that most of the time, the wind flow in Belville is coming out west-northwest, so it would be sweeping across your building into the neighbors, the people living on Hilton Street. I just don't want them exposed to the exhaust fumes that you may be venting to the atmosphere.
And that's why those building code requirements of distances and separations and clearances are in effect.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have a question for this witness?
All right. My name is Louis Assentio from twenty-two Hilton Street. First of all, thanks a lot for the information. I really do appreciate it. I guess I just had a question in regards to the way that you're looking at the idea of traffic, only because you're kind of looking at it as a residence where people are going to be, the majority of people are going to be using public transportation. Now, me being a new resident here to New Jersey, I use public transport, traveling to New York City. I was coming in from the Bronx, you know, where I lived. And one of the things that I do notice is that public transportation, at least through Hilton Street and Franklin Avenue, is somewhat limited in terms of the way that people can get around. When I first moved here, I did not have a car, and I had to buy one in order to be able to move around, just to buy groceries, then I'd go to school, all this other stuff. So what's happening is that I kind of have a difficult time, you know, buying into the idea that people are going to be able to live in these units and not have to own a vehicle in order to buy groceries, to run errands, and everything to do. So my question would be, is knowing that you have these spaces allocated, are there anything for, let's say, people that may have multiple vehicles, or residences that maybe have two people living in a one-bedroom unit that both have cars?
I can jump in on that, because I have experience with other projects. When people rent these kinds of units, the management company makes it very clear, there's one space for you. If you have a spouse that has a car, there's one space. You're sure you want this unit. But there are other ways of taking care of transportation, which is why the developer testified about an Uber stand and also the Zip Cars, because we believe that they will be used, and that's the way we're going to handle it. No system, in my experience, is perfect. But what we try to do is design it to where there is a common denominator... But what we try to do is design it to where there is a common denominator that it will make sense. We believe these options will make sense. Zoning ordinance, we comply. Zip codes, we're going to provide. Uber, we're going to provide. And if those three things are not going to make a potential tenant satisfied, then they're not gonna rent from us. Your point is well taken. Thank you for that. You want to add anything, or does that cover it?
That covers it. And we also have the data from, from the township of Bellev that for rental units and, rental units in throughout the township, now that not, not only includes studio and one bedrooms, which are on the lower end, it includes somebody who, people who rent a single-family home as well, that the parking ownership or par, oh, sorry, vehicle availability is less than one per unit. So while we're on that lower end of the scale, we feel that one per unit is probably a high number. We've designed it to accommodate that, or expecting it to be more on that lower end. And the township of Bellev statistics from the U.S. Census data says that.
Now, as a, as a rebuttal to that, I know, I know that along, along Hilton Street, I know that you guys talk about the Uber and the Zip Cars, but let's say that, you know, one of, one of the big things was about having public transportation being, being the way to go. You know, the, the number 74 bus line is really the only, the only public trans that runs through Franklin and Hilton. Or, you know, you could get to the train stations and things like that, but you have to go a certain distance to get there. Now, has there been any, any talks at all with New Jersey Transit about possibly, knowing that you're gonna have more people there, that there might be a greater need to have more public trans run around there because of the fact that the buses only run, you know, once or twice a day?
Right. I would certainly take your suggestion, and I love making phone calls. With my local knowledge, I do know that if someone who is renting in this proposed project can get from there to the corner of Franklin Avenue and Center Street, all the de-camped New York buses are right on that corner.
There, yeah.
So that can make it. But again, there's nothing perfect. Any attorney who says this project is perfect should not practice land use law. Because nothing in this world is perfect. It's always a compromise. So what do we go back to? Here's the ordinance. Here's our project. Our project fits within the ordinance, and let's see if we can even make it better. Anything else, Mr. Steiger?
I think you've said it all.
Anybody else in the public have a question? Frank Tantoni?
Yes, I wanted to, what you spoke about the shared parking. You talked about the retail during the day when the people are working, and it's supposed about 6:00 o'clock. Is that correct, you said, Mr.?
Well, they're, they're, they're winding down certainly by 6:00. Some, some businesses may not actually close until, let's say, 9:00 at night. But they're not doing their peak business at 9:00, where they would be during the middle of the day. So what I'm saying is that as, as the residential demand builds up towards the late evening into the night, the retail is reducing. In the morning, when the residents are leaving, the retail builds up. So they're 180 degrees out of sync with each other.
What do you do on Saturday? When the, the, most residents don't work and it's the busiest retail day?
And, and it's the busiest retail day because the residents are out there doing what they do during the day. Some people do sit home, it's in front of that couch, and sit on the couch and watch TV. Other people are doing their grocery shopping, their mall shopping, they're running errands, they're helping run with their kids, or, or going to see their nieces or nephews play soccer. So there's a lot of activity. So the residents are then leaving there as well. So we find that on Saturdays, just as that during the weekdays, that we have that synergy of parking demand. And again, we've designed it in order to provide for the residential requirement plus the retail requirement. And that's our 60 parking spaces that were required, where they're not both gonna peak at the same time. They're always gonna be offset from one another. And that's the only point I'm making. I'm not relying upon it to, to justify a variance. I'm just saying that we have some flexibility that, and they're justifying why I believe we have more than a park.
And quite importantly, in doing your research for a project like this, do you look at similar multi-unit previously approved projects and see what actually happens as predicted by the experts?
Yes. I do that all the time, yes.
If I could just make one observation. I have to compliment the applicant's attorney, because what the applicant's attorney is trying to do is answer concerns that the residents have here. But the reality is, he wouldn't even have to do that, because if a project complies with the parking requirement of the ordinance, this board couldn't deny the application on the basis of parking concerns. If the board did, it would be overturned immediately by a court. The parking meets the demands of the ordinance. And again, I compliment counsel for trying to explain why there won't be a problem when this is done. But the short answer is, if it complies, the board can't deny it on the basis of that.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry. Customer is 36 Hilton Street. Just out of curiosity, where is, where's the Uber and Lyft pickup spot gonna be? Where, is, is there gonna be an actual spot allocator for their pickup? Or are they just gonna potentially pull into Hilton?
It'll, it'll pull alongside on Franklin Avenue. As I pointed out before, there's, there's very minimal parking that happens on Franklin Avenue. So we'll have that availability in there.
Well, the, just, 'cause there's an accident.
Yeah, and the address will be Franklin Avenue. So the Uber driver will know that's where I'm going.
All right, as long as it's, as long as the pinned location is on Franklin, but not so much out like the corner?
No. It'll be the address of the, of the, of the building.
Now, Mr. Chairman, the one question that has not come up, and it may be the most important question, is what's gonna happen to the hot dog truck on Franklin Avenue? And the answer to that is, we're not gonna touch it. We're not gonna touch it.
If we're done with questions.
I'm a little confused by what was being said about shared parking. Customers in the store are not allowed inside, correct? Parking?
Yes. They're not gonna be allowed. So the employees, the employees.
Employees, but they're allocated spaces to the employees.
There'll be allocated spaces for the?
Employees of the store.
Not, not necessarily, not during the day, no. And that'll be worked out with a parking management plan. If the, if the up manager knows that space two is vacated every day because they use it for commuting, they'll tell the manager of the store, you can park there from 9:00 to 3:30. So there, there's ability to share that parking. That's all I'm saying.
But they're already sharing this with?
With the employees.
The work up to the store.
With the employees, that's what he said.
No outside customers.
Correct.
There'll be parking on the share.
How you doing? My name is Damani Hamlet.
So you're listening? If it's Corbo's name, please?
Damani. D.A.M.A.N.I. Last name is Hamlet, H.A.M.L.E.T.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. So my issue is about traffic. I own 7 Hilton Street. It's at the end of the, yeah, end of the dead-end street. And I must say, congratulations for getting this done. I saw you guys talking, I have flashbacks. It took me a while, it took me like eight months to get a permit or a basement to get it free, so I saw for getting that done. I'm a realtor as well, so I have two questions about compact cars. I heard you say that they have, they have compact cars. Are you putting it on the application? Or how are you determining that they're not gonna have, how compact cars do they do have or not? How does that work with that?
Well, no. We've provided 28% of our, all of our parking spaces for as compact cars. We know in the real world, there's, that number is higher. It's in 40 to 50%. So we, just, it's gonna work out that whoever randomly wants to rent and live in here, we're gonna have, more than 28% are gonna be compact cars. So if you come to move here, you have a compact car, you're gonna get space number five, which is a compact space.
To get four. My second main, really concerning, this is a problem now. At the end of the block with the traffic, my, my driveway is continuously used to be tenants. So you mentioned retail, you mentioned, of course, the residents will go to 50 units of there. I think there should be a strong consideration, particularly for the people at the end of the, the dead end, where we're continuously having my property over, over wearing times, it's gonna continue to wear down. Get new tar, black tops. I do have a tenant upstairs. I'm also, to be honest, I'm in the process of transitioning to Montclair. I'm gonna have a tenant run with it. But, you know, the home and the property is an issue. And those people keep using my driveway, I'm talking about UPS, DHL, and with the people from, the residents coming to these retails, is any consideration of, provide any advice for how I can kind of protect my property or what they, what they're used to be tenants in my property?
Well, I can, I can give you, probably start with what you have versus what, or had versus what you have. You had a repair facility, so you had constantly people dropping their cars off.
It was already pro, correct.
A, a person following them to pick them up. So there was a lot more activity than this 1,700 square feet of retail will generate. So I believe that intent, we're proposing 1,700 square feet of retail.
Right, but this is not, and if retail comes customers, right?
Right. What I'm saying is, you already had a site that repaired cars, that had a lot of activity.
Oh, no, that's nowhere, I, I wouldn't nearly compare that to what I think was happening with all 50 people moving in and retail. I mean, that car presence is no bit, comparison to the traffic that I think is moving. So I'm just asking this, I understand maybe for the board, maybe, to be honest. Maybe we can have some more signs with dead ends or something to that extent, because it's a serious problem for my property. I think, thought about putting a camera, kind of calculate how many times it's been used, because it is causing damage to, to my, to my payway. So maybe we can have some consideration on that, maybe put some more signs up, but I think it should be considered an overall aspect of this process. I have no problem with Bellev, I love, you guys will expand, I have no problem with that. But we have to be considerate of the people who, you know, live on our street, especially the industry. So, so, let me, let me, like, my point, though, the residents will sooner or later
know that Hilton Street's a dead end and I can't go there. They won't do, they'll big do it once, they'll never do it again. And those are the people gonna be in there all the time. So that intensity should decrease by the change of use of that property from what it is to what it will be. And, and I agree with you. I, I know there's, there's a dead end sign, at least there, the last time I looked there. Maybe it needs to be refreshed, I, you know, that's something maybe that the, the DPDW can do.
And I appreciate your time. And, you know, I was trying to take, take, more of a notice of it somehow, but to show you what I'm saying, but I appreciate that time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public have a question?
Follow-up question. My apologies that this question's already been asked and answered. The retail space, 1,700 square feet, is that a single retail or is this going to be three? Because I've heard that they're going to be three, three businesses.
Let me jump in on that. Yeah, two or three. It's either two or three, because it's split, the, the area's split.
Is it too early to ask? Any idea what the nature of those businesses is?
It is, but I can give you this experience. Retail space is difficult to fill. It's difficult. It takes time. But the one thing that a developer wants is to make sure that the retail space does not negatively impact on the residential component. Because the residential component is this big, and the retail space is this big relatively. So the market will work its way out in a free society, and his common sense and his investment will make sure it works out.
And, and with that 1,700 square feet, Mr. DeLorenzo confirmed this, that only requires four, four parking spaces? I think it's one for every 400 square?
They can buy, no, change.
All right. What is the number?
The first 500, one, then you have the other one, eight, we need two.
We only need two for 1,700 square feet. All right. And will the, the planning board be imposing any conditions, hours of operation on the retail space, so we don't have something running 24 or 7?
Not seeking any variance, so whatever's permitted, I guess, is what they're seeking.
We will go along, Mr. Chairman, with the double ordinance. We are not seeking any variance. That's true.
So that would be 9:00 on my PM?
9:00, it's later than 9:00. Mr. DeLorenzo, do you know the time?
I don't think there is any that they have. If anything, the police may go in there unless you guys put a restriction on it.
Sure, whatever's permitted is what they would do. They're not seeking a variance, so whatever's permitted.
So what, what is the, the latest hour of operation? It's a 10, 11?
Yeah, I don't think there's any standards in the, in the zoning boards.
Yeah. There isn't, so they could conceivably be open 24, 7?
Usually they put conditions on it, so open till 11.
We'll be glad to put a condition at 9:00.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sir?
Okay, go back to the portions. I'm 29, 33. How many parts that would be in the back?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
29, a quarter.
Oh, well, oh, there's four, there's 14.
At that triangle. How many?
14.
14. It says, seat back, put into the property, and, and park a lot to, who's in line in line.
Well, set back, the parking spaces are set back about a minimum of six feet from the property line.
Six feet. With the property line.
Yes, and that's at one point. All the other spaces are, are further back. The four space, there's only four spaces that are up against the property line that's shared. The 10 spaces are on the other side. So there's about a 24-foot aisle, plus another 18 feet of that parking space, plus six.
So your cars, cars, and the back, and, and the back, correct, both away?
Yeah. The double, what we call double loaded, there are 10 on one side and four on the other side, back to back. The four spaces are back to back with another four spaces on the other side.
Don't, don't you think our homes are gonna survive because of that?
Well, you can't get an opinion on that because you have not studied evaluation.
No, I'm not.
Well, everyone knows that. There's nothing to hide. You would buy a house in a backyard or a parking lot in a building with 60, almost a 60-unit? Do you would buy a house, personally?
I would not find that objectionable, the reason not to, but.
You would not buy?
I wouldn't wanna live, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna live next to a gas station either. So I think what's being proposed here.
Okay, I would say that's right, you know, to do park a lot for 300, you know, people.
It's a permitted, what they're doing is a permitted use. It's permitted, they're not seeking a variance.
I'm sorry?
Our zoning ordinance allowed that. They're not seeking, they're doing what's allowed.
Okay, no problem.
They're not seeking to park closer to the property line than is allowed. That's what the law states.
And I don't believe there'd be any negative impact on the neighbors.
No. We see. We go to the next section.
Lawrence Guyanis Planning Board, the charging station, is there only one in there?
It's two.
There's two charge stations in there? And it's just for the residents to use it? Because sometimes that pops up on your GPS when you look for a quick fill or something.
Oh, no, just for residents. Yeah.
Lawrence? Oh, gee. I wasn't here as long as I could.
Would you tell her?
Lawrence Guyanis Planning Board, Arthur.
I know this. This came back.
Anybody else in the public have a question? If not, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Mr. DeLorenzo?
We are, sir. Thank you. Our next witness is the engineer, Charles Ostrocorn. Yeah. And after he's sworn in.
Meeting's in order.
After our witness is sworn, I do have some brief comments that I think will save a lot upon.
Please, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Charles Ostrocorn, O-S-T-E-R-K-O-R-N, Ostrocorn Engineering.
Sir, please give the board the benefit of your educational background, any licenses you hold, and anything else you'd like to tell them about your life.
I was in New York City this morning. The traffic was horrible. Um, I graduated from NJIT, or actually was NCE with an engineering degree, went back and got a surveying degree from NJIT, I'm a licensed engineer, licensed land surveyor, and a licensed planner. And I've done this work, appeared before many boards. I appeared on my last application here, appeared in Nutley, Belleville, Lynn Hurst, and all around Berkeley, and Essex County for years.
Well, except your, this has an exp-
Let's ask him this question. This is gonna be fun. Now and then we need a fun question. You're an engineer on the team, correct?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Baumann's an engineer on this team, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Steiger's an engineer on this, correct, right?
A lot of engineers.
How do you stack up against them?
They're, they're good, I'm telling you. Both of those guys are good. I'm okay.
All right, here we go. Now, you and I went over the letter. We received the letter from Mr. Howard's, that's the October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen letter?
Yes.
Right. Have the board members been given a copy of this letter also? Do you all have any good back? Thank you. All right. Then what we could say is this. We had a meeting with Mr. Howard's and Mr. DiLorenzo. We appreciated that, as we said before. We went through Mr. Howard's' letter. We told Mr. Howard's that we were going to comply with every word in this letter. Is that correct, Mr. Ostrocorn?
Yes, it is.
Have you done that, sir?
Not quite yet.
Well, what do you have to do?
There's a few still items we gotta address. He wants, he wants, we have to do a storm management plan. And we designed the job so there's no additional runoff onto the project. You have seepage pits. And that was his main issue, really. But we're gonna address the runoff.
And of course, that's going to come if the board approves us tonight.
Yes.
Then you're gonna go into detailed construction drawings, detailed more engineering drawings, and you're gonna be doing that with Mr. DiLorenzo and with Mr. Howard's, is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
And are you committing to the board that what this township wants is what you will do?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions for him, Mr. Chairman?
No questions for me. Anybody in the board? Anybody in the public?
Whoops. Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh, Flood Street. When we heard this case back in February, there was a lot of testimony offered about sewer problems.
Yes.
And that the, the residents of Hilton Street were dealing with sewer backups into their homes. Um, it was agreed upon at that time that check valves, gate valves would be installed at at least two of the residences on Hilton Street at the applicant's expense.
Yes, yes.
Is that still in place?
Yes, that is carrying forward.
And those addresses, if I remember correctly, were thirty-four and thirty-six Hilton Street?
I think those were the two addresses.
All right. So just those two, that those two homes?
And that's in this letter.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was carried over.
How many questions have you asked tonight?
Too many, too many. I'm sorry, but.
Mr. Frank Antoni had a question?
You referred to the storm management plan.
Yes.
We have two storm, storm sewers and sanitary sewers.
Yes.
Which, or both are you addressing?
Well, the stormwater management plan is regarding the drainage.
Right.
And what we've done is we've added a seepage pit. Um, we're providing zero percent increase in runoff. So there's gonna be less runoff from the site. At present, the majority of the site is the gas station and the adjacent properties. The majority of it was paved already. Building is going over that. The building is gonna be the same place that it was before, as far as the offsets to the property line. Um, the parking area in the back, that's gonna grade towards the, uh, towards the building area. We have catch bases, a seepage pit, and we're gonna connect that into the corner, that corner of Hilton and Franklin.
And the, the storm water, rain water?
That's, that's the rain water. The sanitary connection, we're gonna connect, originally we had it connected to Hilton, but we, we've connected it onto Franklin. So we have the sanitary sewer connected to Franklin. The water and the gas utilities are all gonna come off of Franklin.
But there's already a problem with the sanitary in that area. Are you aware of that?
We, we went through this, if you, I'm sure you were here at the last meeting. Um, we, we contacted Passaic Valley. Um, the sewer flows there are generally four, four to five hundred thousand gallons per year. But there is occasion when it's raining, there was a Passaic Valley report that they did several years ago, that due to infiltration, the, or cracks somewhere up the line, the system does surcharge several times a year. But it's not due to the sanitary sewer flow. It's due to groundwater flow. We're not gonna add to that at all. We're not gonna add to that at all. We're gonna install the check valves for the areas that do have problems, but our flow is a minimal amount.
There is a problem here, then you're gonna add thirty-six more units, and I've rated fifty-six units.
Well, we're not adding another fix, we're adding another twenty-some odd units, not even that many. But, less than that. But the additional flow still will have no impact on the actual sewers. During periods of heavy rains when they surcharge, that's gonna happen regardless of, if this lot was vacant and nothing went up there, a park was put there, you'd still have problems during heavy rains.
That's the sanitary. Now, what about the stormwater?
Okay, as I said, we're going to, we're gonna have seepage pits. We're not gonna, everything sheet flows across the, the gas station, onto the street now, into the catch basins. We're gonna catch all that flow, but there's no new impervious coverage in that area. There's gonna be a little more impervious in the rear. We're gonna put a seepage pit in there and retain that water from, from getting to the drain here. And we're gonna do it in this accordance with the township engineer's requirements.
It's gonna be retained?
Yes. There'll be, there'll be no increase in runoff.
It'll not enter our storm sewer system?
Eventually, it may, it may, but the storm will pass by then. It's, it's gonna be retained on site for a period. So there'll be no increase in runoff from the site. It'll actually be less. There'll be less runoff from the site than there is now.
But eventually, it will go into our?
It'll go into the ground or it'll go, it'll go into the system eventually. But it does that right now.
And you're familiar with our storm sewer system?
Yes.
Eventually goes to Passaic?
Yes.
And Mr. DiBiase, it's a county road, so you're gonna have to get county planning board approval as well.
That's correct, councilman.
And you're, I'm assuming, going to be willing to execute a developer's agreement that the borough attorney will prepare, and that will also include bonding requirements with regard to public improvements that will be made.
That's correct, councilman.
Anybody else in the public have a question for this witness? If not, Mr. DiBiase, would you have your seat?
Yes, I would. I have a planner. We could either have him testify for forty-five minutes or three minutes. I prefer the three-minute version. Mr. Baumann?
Yes. The name is Paul Baumann. The last name is spelled B as in boy, A-U-M-A-N. You want my credentials?
Well, I think that would be nice.
I'm a graduate of neurochemical engineering, as is Mr. Ostrocorn, which is now part of NJIT. So that tells you my age is not as young as most of the people here. But on the other side, I have more experience than most of the people here. I was the in-house planner for what started out as New Jersey Bell and wound up to be Horizon, as you know it today. I had a career there for about thirty-four years. Took a retirement fifteen years ago. Uh, I started my own business in nineteen eighty-four on the side, apart from nerves. When I took my retirement, I now do that full-time as a planning consultant. I do not practice very much engineering, although I am a licensed engineer and a licensed planner. Both licenses are active in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before, conservatively, let's call it two hundred, planning and zoning boards throughout the state, um, over my tenure. A lot of my current work is in the Belleville, Nutley, Bloomfield area, but I have been throughout the entire state of New Jersey, parts of Pennsylvania, parts of Maryland. So I.
Well, except your witness has a nice shirt.
I think that's enough. I have to give this board full disclosure. This gentleman hired me in nineteen ninety-five to be his manuse attorney. So he was my boss. He was tough.
Now look, the shoes are turning.
All right, so let's, uh, let's do this in three minutes. Um, is it true that this project has been designed according to the zoning ordinance of the township of Belleville with the exception of the loading space and that's a side issue?
That's correct.
Okay. Discuss the loading of space as a plan.
Well, I think you look at the amount of square footage that is involved here for retail, and that's what the loading space is really basically designed to accommodate. It really doesn't get justified. When you can convert that same amount of space into two more parking spaces, that brings you into further compliance with the zoning ordinance. So the benefits outweigh the detriment, granting that variance on the simplistic analysis of seventy C two variance. So I offer that as the, um, positive criteria. The negative criteria is twofold. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Obviously, the neighbors of this building will not be inconvenienced by, uh, whether there is a loading space or a non-loading space when we're providing the adequate, if not one parking space in excess of what's required by ordinance. So it'll have no effect on the neighborhood and the public good. The second prong of the negative criteria, it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. This variance will complement, not impair, the intent of both your master plan and your zoning ordinance, because it will comply and then some to the parking capacity of the site, thereby not posing any detriment to your zone plan or your zoning ordinance. So for those reasons, I believe the variance can be granted. Then the board has to decide whether they want to grant us the variance from that thirty-foot increment of vertical breakup or not. If you need presentation of justification for that, I'd be glad to offer that. If the board has made its mind up to not grant that, then I'll give you the positive and negative criteria. If you've decided that that is a good plan as shown, then I turn off my mouthpiece.
And why don't we just say what the board wants is what we're going to do?
Absolutely.
And then, Mr. Baumann, the final question. Within the framework of sound planning principles, can you issue an opinion, listening to all the testimony now, the architectural testimony, the testimony from our developer, from Mr. Steiger on traffic, from Mr. Ostrocorn in engineering, that this board can grant preliminary and final site plan approval without negatively impacting on the zone plan or the, uh, the zone, uh, or the zoning ordinance?
I definitely see this as a positive for Belleville. It can comply with everything that the zone change was seeking to accomplish, which was preceded by the change in the master plan under its latest reexamination report in January. So for all those reasons, I believe this is a great project for Belleville to consider and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Your witness across, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the board have questions for this witness?
None, no.
One of the latest, uh, letters dated earlier in September, there's, there's something about a variance for the fire pit.
Yeah, we, uh, we corrected that, Mr. Conti, by putting it up.
Yeah.
We added that, yes.
If no other board members have questions, anybody in the public have questions for this witness? Have any further before we open it up for com- uh, comments, Mr. DiBiase? Anything else you'd like to say, or?
Uh, we rest, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our presentation.
Does anybody in the public have a comment they'd like to make at this time? Now's the time. If you wanna get up and say something, you're more than, uh, welcome. Mr. Frank Antoni.
And you need to be sworn in before you testify.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Vincent Frank Antoni, one twenty-nine Mount Crossway. Um, President of the Council Board, uh, the president, the target tonight showed that the planning board can't deny the application if it complies with the zoning ordinance.
No, that's not what, well, I said if.
Well, you're a hundred percent correct.
I was talking about the parking issue. There are variances that are being required. There's no variance that's being required for parking.
Right. But the point I wanna make is, we're here tonight because the zoning ordinance was changed. It was changed by this body a few months ago. I was one of the objectors there. That's why we're here tonight, because this project was originally approved, much smaller. And, uh, these are ramifications. So you can't sit there and say, oh, we have no control over it. You're the people that created this new ordinance that now allows something like this to be built. And, uh, I hope you remember that. What you're doing to people in Belleville. You're catering to the developers and not the citizens of Belleville Township, not the city of Belleville, which it's becoming with these actions that you've done. Um, there's severe parking problems in this. And all these experts, and again, the many decades I've come here, I've listened to so many experts, traffic experts, planning, and they are highly qualified. They have this degree and that degree, and they've done all this research and all. Uh, I listen to the experts on Essek Park. Plenty of parking at Essek Park. I invite everyone and people in this audience, after this meeting, go up to Franklin Avenue, every single night, there are twenty, twenty-five, thirty of cars from Essek Park parked in the Essek County Golf Course, right across. And those people are running back and forth across there. There's no light there and all, which is a danger. And then when somebody gets hit and got some big killed, how did that happen? It happened because of bad planning, poor planning, and experts that only testified. Pretended it was, you know, Wendy's, and you know the chandelier. Years ago, the same expert, the same traffic expert got there, within about four or five months, my late friend Ed Torre and I used to go to those meetings now, just a few months apart. For one, I won't say which one he was favored for, but the one project, the exact same location, you all know Wendy's is directly across from there. For the one project, it was an excellent one. For the other project, oh my God, this terrible project, problem through there. Same exact traffic expert, about three, four months apart. So, so much for experts. Uh, we had, you know, it was years ago, Branford Gardens on Belleville Avenue. You see what happens that he tied down the doors? Those were, when I came to Belleville, those were luxury garden apartments, they called them back then, planned a parking. You can't go there. Chief, Chief Corbo knows all the problems. Few years back, it was a disaster area. They could come, you know, trouble spots and all that. A Crossing Valley Bank, up right up the street in Washington Avenue. They got that. It was built in the twenties, so it's five stories, got a lot of apartments and no parking, because there was no cars back then in the twenties. Now, we got mostly Section Eight there, and they have cars and all that. Uh, Uber, a lot of these people are gonna take Uber. I got three kids, aged thirty-five to forty-two, to forty-four, whatever the oldest one is now, and, uh, they go out on weekends, and you're correct, they take Uber. They leave their three cars home, though. They don't wanna be bothered with parking when they go to a restaurant and all that. So the thing, oh, they're gonna use Uber, they don't have cars. That's a fallacy. Right up the street, I have two apartments. One's, one bedroom apartment. The law says seventy square feet for bedroom for one person, another fifty for two persons. I'm a hundred and eighteen point five. I'm a foot and a half short of a legal bedroom for two people. There's two people in there. There's two cars. They're two nice guys, they're fine, but on the weekend, they got friends from New York, they play cards. Every week in this three, four, or five cars there. These are young Uber users, right? Any weekend come to, and they're nice, they're beautiful tenants, they pay the rent, they keep the apartment immaculate. So there's cars that, these young millennials don't have cars, and they could, they're, they're a hundred feet from a New York bus, but they got cars. And on the weekend, there's three, four cars there, or less. So the, um, the runoff, that's another thing I wanna run off. We don't pay attention, you know, on each individual occupation. We're gonna build seepage pit, we're gonna have retention basin, we're gonna have detention basin. There's absolutely no problem. For eighteen years, I was the trustee of the Safe River Coalition. We fought many issues, because if I remember correctly, at one square feet of soil absorbs, I think, six and a half gallons of water. So the more pavement and more asphalt and all, and, and I just wanna counter the experts, there was a gas that everything was paved. No, it wasn't paved, because if you ever passed there and you've admitted, some of these experts admit, it was an eyesore. That place was a jungle. There was weeds, trees, shrubs growing there. I agree, it was a jungle. But it wasn't all paved over, and that stuff was absorbing water. If any of you paid attention, over the last, I'd say, three to five years, and especially this year, Main Street, more and more had flooding incidents. The police department has more barricades on, and I'm not talking about storms, hurricanes, sand.
This plan meets the stormwater management for the state. It meets the regulation. This plan meets the regulations for the stormwater. It's not exceeding it. It's not adding it.
On that site. On that site. But he admitted, eventually, some of it will.
Eventually, there's no, there's no flow into the system.
No, that's not what he said. Eventually, some of it will go into the system.
Right. After the storm is over and there's no flooding issue, it, it releases into the storm system. It's not an issue.
But here's the problem. You got a gallon, one gallon. So this guy- So this guy's only putting two ounces, this guy's putting three ounces and all that. Eventually, the gallon is full. So each of these projects that we approved, it's no problem, going to be very little. But then the other one is very little. The result, go down to Main Street. This year, I've been doing a lot of work in New Jersey. I come off twenty-one to come home. You know how many times I couldn't get off? I had to go to the other exit of Mill Street there. It's blocked. So the more we do this, you know, so you vote whatever you want, but the problems we have in Bellevue, we're destroying our Bellevue, and you're the folks that recommended these changes to the zoning ordinance to the council. Well, we all know, Stan, the council recommended to you. Do you think it's good? Planning board and planning boards, oh, we think it's fabulous. And then the council says, oh, we're going to vote on it because the planning board said it's fantastic. And here we are with a town, a beautiful little village is becoming in the city. And I think, you know, Mr. Benera, you're a truck, you can't get on Bellevue Avenue. I can't get out of any...
I agree with you. I agree with his traffic concerns in our town. I agree with him.
Today, you want to see, and the state wants to make Washington Avenue one lane in either direction, you want to see this morning. They couldn't turn on Rutgers Street, they were backed up past the middle school, two lanes, right? But it's only, there's only fifty-six units. Oh, it's only sixty cars. Oh, this is only forty units, and this is only three units. It's cumulative, and we're drawing our stake. And finally, I think you better consider it because I told you at the beginning of the meeting, if these residents want to challenge this, they'll beat it very easily. This has been illegal because you have an illegal member standing there, and the chairman knows we have a couple...
That's your opinion. I don't agree with that, but that's your opinion. We leave it to the lawyers.
Well, you should read the zoning ordinance, and we'll have...
We leave it to the attorneys. We're not attorneys. We're leaving it up to our attorney.
We'll have the opinion from the top...
We disagree with you on that point. Go ahead.
Attorney in the state on development. So we'll see where we go.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, you go first. All right, Tom.
I think I had it back. I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I should be sworn in first.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Your name again?
My name is Luis Luis Asencio, A-S-E-M-C-I-O. I live at twenty-two Hilton Street. Really, when I take, really, my comment here is kind of twofold. As I said earlier, I'm a new resident of Bellevue. I moved here a little over a year ago, and I came from the Bronx. So one of the major reasons why I selected the home that I selected was primarily because of the nature of the neighborhood, the nature of the street, the nature of the town. When I was recommended to buy a home in Jersey, I first thought to myself, it's like this is going to be a real hassle to have to commute into New York City and have to do all this stuff every day. What I understood is like I had at the time, my son was a little over a year old, I wanted to get him out of New York City, and I wanted to raise him somewhere where it's quieter, I can let him, you know, let him out, play, and grow someplace a lot different than I did. I selected the home that I selected because of the fact that it was a quiet street, dead-end street, and that I felt that there was a certain camaraderie that I felt safe in there. Now, I don't, I don't by any means believe that putting an apartment building there is going to endanger anybody. The thing that I look at is saying, you're putting in fifty-six new units. To a certain degree, even though all the experts have said that it will not have a negative impact at all in the community, I take a wait-and-see approach to that. Because at the end of the day, the only thing that you can trust is people being people. You know, you do fifty-six, and let's say by two in each apartment, you're talking a hundred-plus people moving in. We don't know where they're coming from. Renters generally, at least in my experience, renters tend to have a different perspective of living versus homeowners. Homeowners have a lot more skin in the game than renters do. To a certain degree, I want to be able to kind of have this idea of having a wonderful neighborhood and a wonderful community, but at the same time, I also take a look at the realities of what the street will, it will change completely. I've seen, you know, I've been able to drive up and down, and I've seen projects like this in other places. One thing that I've been able to notice in those instances is that they are basically standalone. They stand alone in their own space with little interruption, closeness meaning in distance to their neighbors. There are either barriers, street, got to cross the street, walk a block, whatever it might be. You're talking about building this unit literally in a dead-end street where you have nothing but homes there. And as much as I would love to have new neighbors in the community, but at the same time, what I would like for you guys to consider, from our perspective, is the idea of somebody like myself who came from New York City, I would feel somewhat, you know, short-changed if I moved to a suburban neighborhood to then basically be reintroduced to the same environment that I left. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good job.
Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, once again, Michael Sheldon, Forty-seventh Place Street. Do I need this one in or...
Yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the board knows, most community members know who regularly attend these meetings, I'm generally opposed to any high-density developments. I'm always extra skeptical about the parking calculations, because what works in theory on paper normally doesn't work in practice. However, the real issue, as I see with this case, comes down to the following. This project was already approved by the zoning board in February for thirty-eight units. So the fundamental question is, does the developer go with the thirty-eight previously approved, or do we allow him to add another eighteen units, bringing the number to fifty-six? So the project's going to be built, one way or the other, it's just a matter of what is the ultimate final number of units on this site. Mr. Facillo strikes me as an honorable man. He's a double product. I'm going to hold him to his word, as he said at the beginning of the evening, that he's going to build this without any tax abatements, right? That is a win-win for our community. If anything, I'm adamantly opposed to LTTEs or pilots. He's going to do this on his, with his own money, his own finances, without burdening the rest of us. The other thing about this project, which is appealing to me both in February and now, is that by virtue of its nature, it's one-bedroom and studio apartments, it's not two-bedroom units, which means it's going to have little to no impact on the school system. And again, while I'm a trustee, I'm not here to represent the Board of Education, but as a private citizen, but any of projects like this, I always have to ultimately think about, how is this going to affect the population in our schools? This is likely to contribute in this case. I will accept zero to none students, all right? One of the very few times I'll agree with that. But for those reasons, I see this as an overall positive project for the township. We're going to get a lot of ratable income. As I said earlier, one way or the other, this project is going to be built. They're already clearing the site. It's just a matter of, do they get the zoning board's approval from February, or do you grant a slightly increased usage? The only thing I ask is that you do impose the conditions on the retail use to make sure that the hour's restricted to nine or ten P.M., and that we don't have anything running twenty-four seven. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Doug Gershaw, does he have something?
Yes. Jerry Doug Gershaw, Eighth Grove Street.
Please, very soon again. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do. I was chairman of the zoning board when we heard this the first time, and I'll be honest with you. I do not think this is such a major change that it would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. Very honest. However, I am going to ask you to put four conditions on the application, conditions by the applicant who's already agreed to. First condition, no additional charge to any tenant for parking. Because he may not do it, but if he sells the property down the road, the new owner might do it. And that would have an adverse effect on the people on Hilton. Okay? Second thing, the address must remain Franklin Avenue. So that way, nobody could put in to get a permit, to have permit parking on Hilton. That's the second thing. The third thing is the agreement with the sewerage locks, I think on the two properties that were mentioned. And the fourth is exactly what Mr. Sheldon said, because when we heard it, there was no commercial space involved, that hours of operation be set for the commercial space. So therefore, nobody later on, because if you don't put it, and that happened with us with a case involving McDonald's, they came, they put a whole new building on, but they weren't open twenty-four hours, so we never got into it. We thought they were going to keep the same hours. Because we didn't put a restriction on hours, they're now open twenty-four hours a day, inside and out, which I think is a detriment to the town. It's very dangerous that people going in there, and you have derelicts going in there at three o'clock in the morning to stay warm during the winter. So those are the four restrictions I'm asking you to put on. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Your name again?
Yolanda Jengorelli.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess no matter what we say, that we change anything, no matter what we say about the park, and no matter what, they always have an answer. We were promised, Mr. Facillo, that when we had the other plans, that he was forced to buy that land, but he would not touch, even if it was not our land, that he was just going to use the sum for the dog run. Now, because this has been changed about this new eighteen units or whatever, he needs the parking space aside, he's going to take his land that he bought and park the house. You can say we built in a wall, you can say whatever, we live there, nobody else lives there. We're going to have cars on the back of our house, we're going to have walls, I don't care what they put flowers or whatever, but no one can stand up and tell me that you would like someone to come and put cars on the backyard. I have ten grandkids, okay? They go in the yard. Next door to me now is going to be walls with cars on the other side, okay? I'm twenty-nine. I don't think that's fear. I'm not against building the building, build the device size, okay? Like everybody said, the street is small, and you can say, you know what? Oh, the people can walk it three blocks. Who walks today? Everybody wants to park right here in the front of the house, okay? And you can say, oh, but there's so many parks empty in Franklin. Sometime, sometime, but sometime it's packed. And now with the store, the people coming in and out, they're going to be a lot more cars that they got to park if they go to the stores. I think you should think about us, that we live there, we all pay taxes, okay? So you should think about us, not just that this building is going to look like New York. We're in New Jersey, we're not in New York. And I don't see one building on Franklin Avenue where we are, four floors. They're all three floors. I didn't see anything four floors where we are, over there. Even the new building on Franklin Street that they built before Center Street, they're three floors. Now, are we going to four floor on the top of that? They're going to have a barbecue, and they're going to have this, and they're going to have that, they're going to have the towers. I mean, it's going to cover us. I don't think it's something that looks, I mean, if it was smaller...
That's illusory value.
If it was smaller, yes. I think it would be nice to wrap it up and everything, but I mean, fifty-eight unit, we came here, I mean, month after month to fight this, and now we're back where we started from. We're back where we started from. It doesn't make, for me, it doesn't make no sense. I mean, you should listen to us. I mean, they have the money, they can build, take away. I'm sure there's a lot of property all over the place. Build this unit over here the right size, and you can build another one or whatever you go. Because the expert, like you said, they can play whatever they want, they don't live there. They don't live there. When we have to get out of the street in the morning, sometime I wait ten minutes to go bring my granddaughter to school because of the cars that they go up and down, up and down in Franklin. It's not easy. It's not easy on the street, it's not easy on our street. I hope you think about it before you build this and you give it your best because we live there, or we're the only one that we see what's going on. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have a comment? If not, at this time, we'll close the public portion. I just have a, I don't know if it's a suggestion or a comment before we vote. I think your residents, if this project is approved, I think you guys should get together and maybe change the times on a permit parking. I mean, we're all concerned about, you know, your parking, and if I lived on that street, I wouldn't want to come home at night and have a place to park. So maybe you guys can get together and address the issue of the, what time you guys feel, if you change it maybe to eleven P.M. or twelve P.M., so that it's not just preventing people from notly coming there, parking overnight, but also preventing people from this new development parking there. So that's something you guys could do, and that would be, if you get together and came up with a time, maybe you could go to a council meeting, and the council has the ability to change the time of the parking permits.
The building is too high.
Can I ask you a question? Before the board deliberates, there was a request for four conditions. Could you comment on whether the applicant would agree to those four conditions?
Counsel, we will agree to those four conditions.
Thank you.
And I think there were two others that we...
Well, there were others during the course of the hearing that I have noted, but those were some that were just recently raised by someone in the audience, and I wanted to get your answer to that.
We will unequivocally agree to those conditions.
Then, summation? Do you have a summation?
Oh, I have a very long summation. Very long. We've learned several important things this evening. Mr. Pedalino, come on up here. Come on up here. One, we found out that Mr. Pedalino knows where the fire hydrants are. Others, Birmingham, that's what's happening.
We hope he would.
Two, we learned that we're not negatively impacting on the hot dog truck. And three, this application complots. Thanks for coming up this evening.
At this time, would a member like to make a motion?
Underlet, it's being tied to lending.
The public portion is closed at this time. There's no more discussion. Would someone like to make a motion for the approval of this project with the four conditions stated, and the acceptance of Mr. Harris and Mr. DiLorenzo's...
And there were a couple of other conditions that were discussed throughout the hearing process that had been accepted by the applicant. I'll include those if the board determines that it's going to approve the applicant.
Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Viniro.
Yes.
Just one question. Not clear on the applicant, there were two variances that were requested. One was for the loading dock, which is being requested. The other request was for the articulation variance where...
Design.
Pardon me?
Design standard?
Yeah, the design standard, which is having some articulation so that there's no flat wall for thirty feet. And you heard the testimony, and the applicant basically said whatever the board wants to do, take the plan as submitted, or deny that variance and require some additional articulation. I'm not making any suggestions, I just want to know which way the board is going.
Yeah, I think everybody's good with the way it was presented.
Thank you.
Can I ask a point of order? I don't think he's ever discussed what hours was set for the commercial use.
Well, we were about to get into that now.
Oh, I'm just...
As one of the conditions.
Right. Was it ten P.M.? The second condition is ten P.M. The stores must close by ten P.M.
Got it.
All right, so Mr. Vanda, we're calling the roll.
Okay, so Mr. Miram said yes, Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bold.
Yes.
Mr. Corbo.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Womack.
Yes.